All right, it is now four thirty, so we will call the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, December eighteenth, twenty eighteen, four thirty P.M. in the main conference room at the County Administration Building on One Center Street to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barber, Mr. Blackstock.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
President. All, agenda items to be added, are they any? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Second is by Mr. Scares. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. Please record your votes. Motion carries unanimously. For the citizens' convenience, all work session and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube locations as the Board of Supervisors business meetings. Please remember that the Board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communications, discussions, and work. It is not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties as designated by the Board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizens' section of tonight's business meeting. Number five, presentation, five A, County Audit Presentation, Ms. Vanderhae.
Yes, it is with great honor and lots of blood, sweat, and tears that I hand you the county financial statements for fiscal year June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. It is a much longer report because there are more requirements that we had to include this year in the report. If you need some good reading to put you to sleep at night, I would offer that you go there. A good document for you to read if you want a good idea of how things are going is the management discussion and analysis. And that's a report that I put together each year that kind of tells you some statistical information and talks about different things that went on during the year financially. And we are fortunate to have our lead attorney, auditor, not attorney, thank you. Lead auditor Scott Wickham from Robinson-Homer Cops who did the majority of the work on this audit, and so I'm going to have him make presentations for you all.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you all for having me. Again, my name is Scott Wickham, and I'm the partner in charge of the county's audit. Kim, is that correct? The report is about twenty or thirty pages longer this year. Gatsby puts in one new standard and adds thirty pages to the report. That's been a little more than most of us seen this. About ten as well for a lot of localities, but with the school board and all their requirements that they have as well, they added quite a few pages. Well, the plan first is to go through the audit report and some high level here and hit some high points. So the fix report with the nice pictures you all have, I'll look at that one. So on page two through four, we have the independent auditor report. And again, this is the thicker report that has the nice picture. You all have, again, every year you'll have a nice unmodified opinion, so that's a credit for the staff, they're doing a good job of giving us good records to audit, and I feel comfortable about the numbers, seems really correct. There are two new paragraphs in this opinion that talk about the change in accounting principles and the restatement of the beginning balances. That is related to Gatsby seventy-five and Gatsby eighty-five. Seventy-five had a significant impact on your financial statements. They replaced Gatsby forty-five for the OPEB requirements, and Gatsby eighty-five was changed some of the language, so it did not have so much of an impact for you all. On page five, starts the management discussion and analysis. And again, Kim does a great job with this, so if you're not going to read all one hundred and seventeen, one hundred and eighty pages of this report, this is a good section to read. It summarizes, and I've reviewed through it to make sure that it's accurate, and it all looks good, and it's comparative, so it kind of gives you a good idea of the difference between last year and this year. On page fifteen, which is exhibit one, this is the statement of net position, or the balance sheet, if you will. And this is on the full accrual accounting, so this includes everything. This is all of the county assets, all of the county debt, so even the buildings and all of the accrued liabilities, the net pension liability, and OPEB liability, this is everything. Across the bottom there, you'll see the net position, and so that unrestricted portion of about twelve point three million is what the county has to work with essentially. The twenty-three point six is the net position that you all have in buildings and vehicles and related assets that you cannot sell or be in use. One thing that jumps out is the school board portion of that unrestricted of negative eighty-two million. That is a significant number, but it is driven by the net OPEB liabilities and the net pension liabilities, and it's not a big concern. So I want to point that out, that normally net, negative net worth is a problem, but it's a lot driven by the teacher pool of the BRS liability that's passed down by the state. So I've got some details on that, and to kind of summarize, the school board and the county as well are doing what BRS has told them to do, paying the rates that it's been told to pay, but that rate isn't enough to suffice and cover that liability based on the stock market and other bearing items. On page seventeen, which is exhibit three, this is the balance sheet, sure.
Can I ask just a quick question about that part? Do you see that number changing with the reversal to new employees being on a defined contribution versus defined benefit plan with BRS?
A little bit, a little bit. It's hard to tell typically this year because that liability is actually a year behind the calculation as the standards allow from BRS. And the stock market last year did pretty good, so some of that has to do with the investments doing much better than they had in the past as well. So it has decreased. Now, but that OPEB liability was new, and that's a significant number, pretty long with a couple of transfer points as well.
Question.
Sure.
The eighty-two million, almost eighty-three million, that you have on the school board, does that include the debt service as well as the pension liability?
That, that, it only includes the pension and the OPEB and their accrued, the debt for school related. In the financial statements, your school assets that have debt related to them are shown on the county side, so that debt is shown on the county, but some of the assets, they transfer over once the debt's paid off. All right, so on exhibit three, this is again your balance sheet, and this one's just for the county, the governmental fund here.
The page?
On page seventeen. And this is the balance sheet on a shorter, shorter term view there, so across the bottom you have your fund balances there with the unassigned amount of eighteen point eight. And that's essentially what you all have to use, and what you have to use for your budget as a benefit, because the fund balances are a shorter term, made up mostly of cash, less your payables for the most part. So you have a total of about twenty-nine point six in all of the funds, and about eighteen point eight that's available for use as unassigned. On page nineteen, which is exhibit five, this is an income statement, and again, this is on that shorter term cash, cash activity plus short-term receivables, short-term payables. And as you'll see there, the general fund had about nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to the good. Now, that does include some restricted items due to the issuance of those capital leases. You have some cash on hand for the Enai One project to increase that amount. Then I'm going to go back towards the back of the notes here, actually, it's on page one sixteen. There's all kinds of information skipped there, a lot of details and disclosures and the calculations, how the numbers were arrived, so look through if I'm plenty of detail there. But on page one sixteen, it talks about the adoption of the new standards, and I want you all to see the impact that you all had in your financial statements with just the OPEB requirements. When we originally heard about the OPEB, we expected it to be mostly just your health insurance that you allow retirees to stay on, but also the state pushed down the group life, the health insurance credit as additional liabilities, so it was more of an impact than we expected when we heard about it originally. So as you can see there, we restated your books by about a little over two million dollars for the county and almost eighteen million dollars for the school board, so significant impact in a negative way to our work of standards. That was pretty typical to have a significant restatement for you all, it was quite a large statement to take your report.
Why don't we, for the audience, why don't we state what OPEB stands for?
Sure. OPEB is the other post-employment benefits. And a typical OPEB is when you allow your retirees to stay on health insurance, they want to accrue that cost while they're working, because once they have, once they retire, they've already earned that benefit to stay on. So the idea is someone who is sixty-five to seventy years old might cost more to insure than someone who is thirty years old. So there's a kind of a blended rate there, and the difference in that cost or premium is calculated as a liability, and you all do hire an actuary from the best numbers.
And those numbers have changed as life expectancy's changed.
Absolutely. And I think they tend to follow BRS's requirements for those, and those tables that they have. But yes, they do, and that number, you all had number in your report previously. Under Gatsby forty-five, you had several ways you could calculate a liability. With Gatsby seventy-five, you had almost one way to calculate the liability to get more comparison to other localities. They also did not let you amortize it, you put the entire liability on the book. That's why there's a big change. Yeah, so on page one seventeen, the next page, all that worked in Gatsby seventy-five, and we had several new ones coming again. One that could be a significant impact for you all is Gatsby eighty-seven, which is the leases impact. We have a few years before that goes into place, but I wanted to make sure you're all aware of it. The basic idea behind it is that now all leases will be a liability. Previously, an operating lease was disclosed as a significant, it was not both as a liability. You just rented it. If you rent a building, you pay as you rent the building. Now, if you have a one-year lease to rent a building, you will record that liability for the cost of the lease, but you'll also have an asset, a deferred right to use that building. So that'll be the change. If you're using a lease to buy a piece of equipment, that'll still be a liability and always has been. You'll still have the equipment as the asset. The difference really is that operating will now be considered a liability on the books.
Question, question about that.
Sure.
I don't mean to be asking so many.
You're fine.
On eighty-seven, the liability, if we did a ten-year lease, is that going to be amortized over the ten years, or is it going to be all dumped into the first year?
I believe it would be the present value, but it would all be the first, it would all go into liability, and you'd also have that right to use that building for that ten year period.
Would it, would it net, would it net out?
So each year it would decrease because you would, if you used it, it would be a liability, but both the asset would decrease and the liability would increase.
But does the asset portion of the statement, people will allow those statements to be given here?
Yes, so it would have no impact on the bottom line.
Sort of to wash.
For the operator, exactly.
Sort of to wash.
For the operator, exactly. And the terms, operating capital leases will go away essentially, but the treatment's going to be very similar, so it really won't have as much of an impact on the bottom line, but it will on your assets and your liabilities.
Do you see it having, that particular change having any impact on borrowing power or bond rates?
I don't, I don't think so, because it's a, it's a change that a lot of, all the counties require to have, and it's following a fast rate, so all commercials have already gone that way or are going that way soon. I think that that will be a change that everybody sees, and it won't affect the bottom line as well. So I really think that the impact might be more on the finance staff accumulating all the leases, so that's kind of where, trying to get that out there so we can start working on them as they're accumulated, instead of here we need all the leases you have as you're building, it must be easier to do that. A few other changes coming, but I think that one is a significant one. There is some changes for refunding, if you all stopped refunding before. On page one nineteen, one nineteen is your general fund and budget versus actual by function. A lot of detail goes into these numbers, but one thing I did want to point out is the fund balance across the bottom. So as I mentioned, it did increase by about almost a million dollars, and some of that is related to the restricted funds on hand that you're in. But I want you to do, to see that the budget is being used there. So the original budget was about three million dollars used to fund balance, so I know that a lot of localities have been struggling to balance the budget, but that is one thing that we really need to work on, is getting a balanced budget in order to make sure we don't decrease our fund balance further. And I have some calculations on fund balance here, and I hand out those, but I want you to kind of see that number there, because it kind of jumps out too. All right, there's a lot more detailed schedules there and exhibits, but I am going to jump back to the last couple of pages of the report here, on page one seventy-nine. Page one seventy-nine is the gas report. The gas report's where we talk about our testing of the state requirements and other standards that we're looking at. You all have a good clean opinion, again, unmodified opinion here with no findings. So again, that's a tribute to the staff doing a great job, both the county and the schools of making sure that there were no issues noted throughout our testing. On page one eighty-one and one eighty-two, this is a similar report, this is on the federal funds that we're testing on. So again, another clean opinion, another good opinion for the county and the schools who are on the testing with the federal funds. And those federal funds are listed on page one eighty-three and one eighty-four. All right, that's all we have on the audit report, it's quite long, there's a lot of detail I could go over for hours and hours, but are there any questions before I move on to handouts?
We want to talk about in the handout, net difference in the fund balances at the end of the year.
Yes. All right, so with that, I'll move to the handout, and on page two, I have some trend information, and this is based on exhibit one that I mentioned. And exhibit one is that full accrual, which includes all of the assets and all of the liabilities. So as you can see, a decrease in the unrestricted net position of about almost ten percent per year. So you can see that throughout. You have a continuing service ratio of about eight percent. So again, this is a little bit bigger scale, this has all of the, all of the assets with all the debt. One thing I really wanted to make sure we're looking at is on the fund of general fund, so that's on page three and four. So on page, on page three, we have trends from two thousand and nine to two thousand and eighteen, and as you can see, the real property taxes have increased about three point two percent per year over that period. Unfortunately, the intergovernmental, which is your state and federal funds, has increased at less than one percent per year. That's pretty typical from what I'm seeing throughout Southwest, particularly, southern and southwest. The total revenue is though, one point seven percent. That means that you're increasing your revenue, your tax revenues so much, but not enough to increase the total revenue, revenue base there. So that's something to watch, and make sure that your total revenues are increasing, at least in line with, if not faster than expected. Right down below that next green box, you see the total operating expenditures of one point six percent increase per year. And then down the bottom, you see the fund balance and the cash balances, you'll see a decrease of about one percent per year. So these, these fund balances here include, this includes all your funds, all of the assigned funds and all of the restricted funds and the general fund. One thing I point out is the unassigned funds is what you really have available too, and those numbers are not in here, but I can give them to you, if you want right to them. But on page four, this is the calculation of the operating expenditures, and this is how we feel about where the financial position is. So I mentioned that the audit report itself went very well, but how did the numbers turn out? So the end of the year, in two thousand and eighteen, you all had eighteen percent of fund balance for operating expenditures. For a county this size, looking at all of the fund balances, it probably should be closer to twenty-five percent. So we're on the low end there. Looking at unassigned only, unassigned is what you truly have to use going forward, it's twelve point three percent. That number probably needs to be closer to twenty percent. So again, your, your unassigned and available fund balance is less than probably we recommend for a county this size to go forward. Your unassigned last year was at fourteen and a half percent, twelve point three percent, that was not in there, so I want to mention that. Fourteen and a half unassigned percent last year, and twelve point three percent this year. Absolutely.
Yeah, we added a million dollars.
You added a million dollars, correct. You all had quite a bit of cash on hand for the Enai One project, where you all issued that, that was two million dollars, I believe, that you all issued out there. Most of that was still on hand after June thirtieth, so that decreased your fund balance, but not really your unassigned available funds.
But our unassigned last year was fourteen point three.
Correct.
This year it's twelve point four.
Correct, so it did decrease, so you're available.
So that means our total budget went up, and is that because of capital, or is that a cause of that?
It's because, not because of that, it is because of various capital items. There were some increases, and I think I have some detail on different apartments, but I think that the shares, there was a lot of vehicles purchased in the shared apartment, there was, finished up quite a few projects, I know with the library renovations and those kind of things, so there was some capital items that went into that, for sure. Is there any to your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So on page five, we talked about the debt and the Enai One issuances, and we talked about the OPEB a little bit. This is kind of the debt summary for all of the county and the schools, and have it by year. What jumps out to me is the eighteen million dollars net OPEB liabilities to the school board. The total liabilities for both the county and the schools is one hundred and eighty-five million. I want to make sure I point out again, that is not just, that's not only the debt you're paying for some of this on, this is all of the liabilities in your financial statements, so that includes the net pension liability, the net OPEB liability, your accrued sick leave, and all other items that are in there. It does include your bonded debt, but also those items as well. So with that, it comes up with a debt per capital of about two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight, and looking at the state average, it's about three thousand nine hundred and eighteen. Now, that, you should be below the state average, because the state average includes Fairfax and some higher dollar localities. Looking at some other trends, I have seen that, I noted that you all have a strong debt to assess value percentage, as well as a strong debt versus expenditures for standard force requirements, so the debt levels have improved heading down some of the debts you all did have. You're probably right on my note, I would expect the localities to be as far as the debt. I did, I did pull some comparable localities there, the APA's comparable cost report, which is available on the APA website, to give you an idea. You are a little bit higher than some of those, lower than Halifax, a little higher than Franklin, but in the ballpark with all of those, so as you can see that. And then making sure that you're below the state average is a good thing at this point for you all. And the deferred items there, it's just, boy, it's a big number, but that's a lot of premiums on those issues. On page six, this is a good visual trend and information on your assessment, having some growth there in terms of locality, and those are the growths you all have in the county, so I think that's a growth that you have. On page seven, this is some visual charts that pulled from that trend information we talked about, the details. I think it's helpful to kind of give you an idea of where the, where the funds came from and where they went. On page eight, again, the trend information, this is a chart. Looking at the expenditure side, there are a couple of things jumped out, and as I mentioned, there was an increase in public safety, I know that there was some Enai One software, and there was the, quite a few new vehicles replaced there, and then the schools increased there. That was, I believe, a use of carryover funds that they had in the prior year, so it kind of dropped a little bit and then bounced back up if they used some of their carryover Okay, so on page nine, we talked about that net pension liability a couple times, and this kind of gives you a summary of what it means for you all and the school board. I put this in here because I want you to understand how significant that estimate is. BRS hires an actuary to provide the numbers to us to input into your report in different pieces. The liabilities are capitalized based on the seven percent discount rate, so they're assuming that you're going to make seven percent on your investments. But you can see the impact if they make eight percent on their investments. You now have an asset, but if they don't make seven percent, thirteen percent, so you can see the impact that the swing there has based on your investments. And as I hope so you all, the market has been quite wild here recently, so it's hard to predict and predict seven percent. They do smooth that, amortize that over five years, but it does have an impact. On page ten, this is a new page to this presentation, look here, this is the OPEB changes. Very similar idea, has a sensitivity for the OPEB calculations. As you can see, the health insurance OPEB there, again, is calculated at three point five percent, which is actually the twenty-year double A bond rate. So the county's portion of that is two point one, and the school board's at eight million. And again, that is the allowing the retirees to stay on, and that's calculated by an actuary, so that's, that's what that liability is. You have to improve life portion there, and then you also have the health insurance credit portion, and both of those are through BRS, and similar to BRS liability and net pension liability, you're paying what you're told to pay, that's not anything that you all done wrong, that's a liability passed down by the state to all the state localities. But you can see again, the swing in that calculation based on the rates that are used by, by the actuaries. On page eleven and twelve, this is a report that we require to send to the state where we do different testing, and detailed testing of the online system for BRS. We go in and verify salaries, we verify increases and terminations, to make sure that people are removed from BRS when they're terminated, make sure that the salaries get increased when there's raises, make sure that the birth dates are right and all that good stuff, to make sure that information they use at the state level from that system is accurate for making the calculations, as well as the people's retirement is accurate. So this is a report we do on that, and both the county and the school board received a clean report. All the testing came back very clean, so that's always good to have. Confidence in your BRS report. All right, the next we had some management comments on page thirteen through fifteen, a couple typical items, making sure that everybody's completing the complete arrangements on time, completely, I know the state re-looked at those, to make sure those are accurate and complete on time. The jail net co-payments, we had several forms that we were unable to find, just make sure that they're very organized and they have those forms. I believe each of these items has been discussed with all departments, and they're working on correcting those items. A couple other items with the jail accounts, we talked with the sheriff, and they're working on addressing those as well. The bank collections, this was the first year the treasurer implemented the ability to make tax payments at the bank locations themselves. Very convenient for the taxpayer, a little bit difficult for the accounting side of this. So I talked with the treasurer, a couple ideas to improve that going forward. It was difficult to, typically you can run a report at the end of the year, and that's who has not paid their taxes. With funds being budgeted at the banks, it was a little difficult to know who had, who had paid at the bank, because that report wasn't accurate with the county. We were able to work that out, but it required some additional work between both of us and the treasurer this year, so I wanted to make sure that he was aware, and everyone was aware that we felt that, that report should be accurate, and he can do that going forward if he does. And that'll be corrected. A couple items at social services, minor items, I think that there was a cancellation that wasn't posted of three thousand dollars on time, so that needs to be posted, minor items there. On page fifteen, we did have a couple items with social services. On page fifteen, we did have a couple of items with social services that I wanted to point out. During our test of the programs, we found people had a case action forms, did not have documentation by the supervisor. I believe they may have had the proper documentation in the case files themselves, but that purchase, that documentation provided to us for that purchase, did not have evidence that the supervisor had reviewed that purchase. Credit cards, we had a difficulty reconciling a few of the credit cards, but we had one item jump out at us where there was a trip to Mariners Landing. And because Mariners Landing is not too far away, we felt that that was probably not allowable expense, particularly for federal funds. And since some of the expenditures at the social services are deemed federal funds based on the state level, we felt that that was probably not allowable. It would have been taxable possibly to the police.
Was that just one hotel bill?
That was one significant bill, there were several people included in that, but that was for a conference they had.
So, several of them stayed overnight in there.
Correct. That's correct. And then payroll, and maybe not unusual here, but it's something I think is probably a good idea. The board approved a percentage increase for salaries, but did not approve a listing of salaries. There was no visual approval for us to say that so-and-so's salary was this. There was a listing we were given, but it was, we don't know where it was approved. So, kind of an idea of having a salary in each personnel file or have a listing approved by the board or something to give us a defined salary instead of just approving a percentage increase each year.
For each employee.
For each employee, exactly. And that could be documented, could be done by the director, but somebody that we can verify that was reviewed and approved. And then the last whole page is here, is the summary letter of the audit itself. And we've talked several times about the new standards that were in place. You all have several estimates in your financial statements, all the same ones you've had in the prior years. The calculation of your OPEB was a little bit different under the new standard, but still it's a significant estimate and it's a reasonable magnitude based on your actuary. Otherwise, working with the staff and management, everything, everyone's great to work with, the processes work very well. I'm very happy with the audit itself, so that kind of concludes my handout there. So, just to summarize in total, I feel like the audit process went very well. I know that I worked extremely hard to get this board together and I was emailing Kim to help me out late in November. I think she sent me the NDA on Thanksgiving Day, maybe, so a lot of effort went into this from all parties. And I appreciate the outstanding effort from the staff, both the county and the school board, and getting that together, so. The numbers, I wish we could get the fund balance approved a little bit, but otherwise, I think it's a pretty good audit. I just wanted questions.
Yes, sir.
The unassigned fund balance, I would like to, if we're in this report, is it?
It's not in the handout, it isn't in the audit report.
Page seven.
Yes.
Is it, is it, I want to see where we were, seventeen to eight.
Sure, absolutely.
I understand you said it decreased the centralizing of the budget.
Do you want to run the numbers?
Yes.
I didn't put it in my handout, but I don't have it, the prior year audit report, but it is on page seventeen. I think I could do that for you.
I can.
Yes, exactly.
Eighteen to eight eleven, eight thirty-five.
Exactly.
Kim, you don't have the unassigned balance from seventeen.
No, I was looking.
Is that in your NDA?
It's in the NDA, yeah.
It might be in there.
It's like seventeen, it's almost a million dollars plus.
Your expenditures were higher this year.
It should be around like five or six.
Your expenditures were higher this year, probably part of that.
Yes.
So, it's a very good question. And I can make a note to add that to my presentation, so I'll have that next year.
I think we need as a board to understand, that's a bottom line number.
Yeah, I think that's a truer measure of where you all are is the unassigned. So, I think that I can add that in here.
And the number of this eighteen, that does not include the money that we borrowed around one.
Correct, that isn't restricted.
Because that's restricted.
Exactly.
So, this is truly unassigned.
Exactly.
Okay, and it went up. And originally we budgeted how much, Kim, to dip into three million dollars.
Three million.
So, and you're saying that.
So, it went up, it did go up because you all did have half a year collections with the increased tax rate that wasn't in the budget, part of it.
Okay, the money that, well, we raised the rate of taxes and it was paid in June.
Exactly, so you had half of the, a year of the increase.
That's a good one.
We had about nineteen and a half million dollars in collections on June twentieth, eighteen point eight.
I think that, Kim, if you would, the board would use, see that. But part of that is the tax hike that we implemented where people prepaid or paid their taxes on time.
Yes.
Need.
How long you saying, thought, it'd be nice if you'd reach out to Shorter to see if he could give us an idea of how much that might have affected? The time increase. Yeah, so we get a net net.
A year of the year. Yeah, to give us a net number regarding the whole year. The social services portion of this budget, does that include the audit that we requested? Is this a special audit that we requested or is this an audit that you completed? Robinson, you all did two audits for the county.
Correct.
One was a regular audit.
Correct.
And then we asked for a special audit.
Yes.
Is this the special audit?
That is not the special audit.
Okay. Well, we're going to, we received a handout for that. Is he going to be able to explain some of that to us tonight?
Do you have questions? Yeah, because it's actually, the numbers in here are the same number.
Correct.
They just did a deeper dive for you all.
The numbers didn't change?
No, no, and they, you know, because their numbers are part of this audit, but they did just more extensive work when they came. And they provided a separate report for you all of what they found when they went there. But certainly if you have questions about that, you can certainly, he'll entertain those.
Well, I think we'll wait until we get to this.
Well, I am familiar with that part, so I can, and I didn't plan to go over the other pieces, but I have it and I can if you have questions.
So, I want to ask a few questions.
Sure, sure.
Because I want to understand what's going on.
Okay.
The special audit that was requested, did you, some of the things, just like I just asked a question about the trip to Mariners Landing.
Correct.
Was it overnight stay and you all said that was probably out of line? And the special audit, is there anything that sticks out that you all play on that this board needs to be, you know, because of the big red flag?
In that, we, so we looked at almost every administrative expenditure. Full case files for the client files would have been extremely cumbersome, but the administrative was where we were focused on because of the ability they had there. We looked at most of the credit card statements. I think that we had a difficulty reconciling some of them. For the most part, we were able to close it and close, but we did recommend they change the procedures there a little bit so it'll be easier to follow. I saw things like a washer and dryer purchase. I don't, I couldn't tell from the state average if that was for a client. I assume it probably was and that wouldn't be unusual for the bus. I saw a microwave, could have been for a client, wouldn't be unusual if it was, but there was no documentation attached to that credit card to say so. It probably is in the case file, but from the credit card statement, I didn't know whose case file or, so just a better documentation, probably on the credit cards. As far as anything jumping out, we actually found a Mariners Landing in our regular testing of their credit cards and that really is still the most concerning purchase that I noticed on all the credit cards.
It was overnight stay.
It was.
Too close by the county.
Exactly, because that's not too far away and I feel like they probably should, if they wanted to have the conference there, they probably should drive there and drive back.
And I agree. So, what you're saying is like the purchase of the washer and dryer, the documentation was not in a case file to show that it was purchased for a specific household or client?
It may have been in the case file.
But you didn't go in it?
I didn't, it didn't go in it because I didn't know whose case file it was. And with the documentation on the credit cards, all I had was of the person.
So, you think it was more of a documentation issue?
Exactly, I do.
So, is nothing that really sticks out that would make you say that we've got corruption over there?
No, not from what I could find. The documentation I saw, the timesheets were, I know there were a few that weren't approved, but for the most part, they were all approved. I had timesheets to look at, I mentioned the salaries not being approved, that was probably the item that I would note and I think a lot of places probably have that. Where you get in the habit of approving an increase and don't, in the budget, exactly.
And just give everybody three or five percent or whatever.
Exactly, instead of approving a list of employees and what that impact is for each employee. Sometimes that's done at a director level and it's not, it may not be done at all, but in this instance, it was just a list and approved and there was no signature on it or any kind of number for us to tie back to the minutes where that was approved.
When there was a, I don't want to get in the weeds in this, but I know the organization that I ran, an employee got a raise that was documented in that personnel file.
That's what we don't find.
Okay. And it was, but what I would reason, it was across the board raise or it was a merit raise or whatever.
Correct.
And that didn't exist.
Correct.
But you didn't find where it looked like somebody was being given money, unappropriately, raises under the paper and so forth.
No, we did not find it.
But typically we wouldn't find that unless you did a forensic audit. I mean, it, really went in depth.
We did, pretty much do a forensic audit, it was a great procedure, it was where we looked at two payrolls, every person on the payroll. Extremely in depth on those two payrolls and we looked at them athletically to make sure they were payable throughout each payroll and they were.
Same on the credit cards?
Same on the credit card, I can't remember how many papers we looked at, but it was a significant portion of them and consistently we're having issues where we noticed that the director was traveling and purchasing gas a lot. But it was approved, the director was taking the car home and she was being taxed for that.
So, she was being taxed on driving the car to her phone home?
Yes.
Mr. Skins?
Would you take with the regular side of them, all the budget reports that were given to the DSS board, kind of the figures that were given, I guess, did you review those at all?
I was, well, to the DSS board, not necessarily, but the reports that were sent to the state to verify, I did verify what was actually claimed on later.
So, you did not verify what the social services board was approving every month, is what I'm trying to get at.
No, I did not. Not what the board was, I looked at what's purchased.
The board is ultimately responsible for accountability and I was serving on the board at that time and I wasn't real clear on where the expenses were going through the report we received.
Okay.
And so, I was hoping that you would be able to verify those costs when you were doing the audit.
Sure, so, I mean, I can provide samples of what reports you probably should be seeing. I have those. For the simplicity of testing, I was able to obtain the Excel listing of all payments made and I was able to use that for testing. So, I was able to look at all of them myself, but as far as comparing them to the reports that you were providing, I only had the minutes to show what you were providing, not the reports themselves.
But you did reconcile, reconcile what was going to the state.
Yes, and I had that three thousand dollars on that, so.
Hey, Mr. Bates, second question. Mr. Wickham, how long have you been doing these audits?
Over ten years.
How long have you been doing Pittsland County's audits?
Lee, he's been there, Lee, probably.
Been lead for four years, four years, I think.
So, you've been doing this for four years, Pittsland County?
As lead.
All right, let me ask.
As lead, now he was, he was there before.
I had worked before as a staff, but as lead.
I'm just laying out a line of question to get to this. On page fifteen, we see three thousand with the DSS, five hundred sixty-one dollars and it says, no federal funding. And pardon my obtuseness because I don't know everything, but however, in this, so the county picks this particular bill up? Am I correct here, this is not federal funded from the federal end and this is just where we have to pay for this, is this correct?
So, are you back to the Mariners Landing?
Yes, sir, this is somewhat of anomaly, this is what we had to do. My question is, did we have to pick this up?
No, you did not have to.
Okay, let me ask this, how about in the last four years, since you've been doing this, say, by yourself, so to speak? Are there any anomalies with the DSS in the last four years on this that it spoke out or you recall?
You know, I think we have had some credit card recommendations in the past. I know we did in the prior year, we have in the past in total. And to clarify on this one in individual, we don't feel that it was allowable for state and federal expense, but it was still processed that way. So, you all did pay your local portion of that expense, just like you would any other administrative expenditure, but no, it didn't impact you all differently than other expenditures. We just don't feel that it's the federal.
Yes, sir, thank you, did excellent job, Mr. Wickham, I'm not concerned about this particular questioning for the impact thus far, I'm looking for some other information. Now, on page four.
Can I ask one question? Hold on to three thousand.
Yes, sir.
So, what you're saying is, three thousand dollars, you think that if the feds may, the federal government may, if they questioned it, we may not receive any money.
Correct.
But we did, it went through it.
They did, they didn't look at it.
They didn't look at it.
And that's not material to the state or federal, so they're probably not wanting it.
Okay, and my second question is page four, you're looking at the twenty-five percent range for the size of this particular county?
Yes.
What is the, what are the figures that are going to be driving that twenty-five percent range that you say that we should be at somewhat comparably when we are very low on the size of our fund balance due to the size of this county? What would, what would be the driving factors that would put that twenty-five percent in the range that we should be ideally at for this particular county?
Sure, so historically, we had recommended probably twenty percent in general. The fact that you all have twice your collections and you all have quite a lot of your funds come in right at the end of June, that's going to increase with your fund balance would be if it was in the July or in August. So, I do feel it should be a little bit higher, twenty percent for that. Also, with just the decrease in state and federal funding, the reliance on self-local funding is why I had the increase of twenty-five percent in general. And then again, to go back to that second portion of my guideline essentially for your fund balance, to being the twenty percent for the unassigned, to kind of feel better about where you all are and getting that balanced budget, but you all did have half of that tax increase in your FY eighteen and I feel like a full year of the FY nineteen broke out.
Any other question, good morning. Thank you, excellent presentation, thank you very much.
And on the front of that handout is my email, if you all find or have any questions at any point, feel free to email me.
Good job, Mr. Wickham.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to five D, misdesign voters project, Mr. Mayles. Hey, y'all, how you doing, Jim?
Good evening, how are you? I come to you all this afternoon with the misdesign voter project. All of you should have received a packet with a PowerPoint and then attached documentation to go with it. So, I wanted to explain the project to you in its entirety. So, the State Board of Elections created this initiative to correctly, to identify and correct the district discrepancies in the House of Delegates or the State Board, the Senate Districts. So, what happened is the voter registration office received a list with three hundred and eleven addresses that we were to research and identify whether or not they were actually in the wrong district. And this project started because of US House of Delegates. They notified that there were people registered in the wrong House of Delegates district. That's what started the whole process to begin with within the State Board in two thousand and seventeen.
So, you mean like the US House of Delegates?
The state, yes, the state House of Delegates. So, the state House of Delegates, that investigation started in two thousand and seven. So, I wanted you to know that we did reference these following codes is what the State Board required of us. So, you, twenty-four point two dash three oh three, three oh four and three oh five are the references of the election boundary and those are what will written into law come the redistricting boundary lines. You can also see that twenty-four point. Um, you can also see that twenty-four point two dash one fourteen, section six, did require of my office to process, uh, those transfer requests from the registrar. So once we actually received the notification that those addresses were incorrectly registered in Pennsylvania County, we had no choice but to transfer them. That's what that code, uh, refers to. Um, so the description of it was, we actually used six separate maps and data to research it. Um, we had to go and take each household, three hundred and eleven households, and physically align them within the district that they were in. Um, so it took quite a bit of time. Um, the data did show that there were several households that were registered in the incorrect Senate or House district, and they were corrected. We also determined that there were thirty-four registered voters that were incorrectly registered in Pennsylvania County. Out of the thirty-four, only ten households are paying Pennsylvania County taxes. So the thirty-four voters were found out of five hundred and eighty-nine. So there, we looked through all of them, but only thirty-four were found. One voter was transferred to Franklin County, two voters were transferred to Henry County, and thirty-one were transferred to Halifax. All the voters were transferred to their correct voting location. They all received letters along with the notice for the new voting, uh, location. Furthermore, we did send a letter to them explaining why they were transferred, and that it was strictly for voting purposes only. I have included that letter that we did send in your packet. Um, the citizens, we also had a meeting with them on this past Saturday, December fifteenth, at Danville High School. Uh, it was to continue to help educate why it was that we did the project and why we were required to do the moves for the transfers. That letter is also in your packet as well. Uh, I did want to point out that that meeting did go fairly well. Um, there was a more clear understanding of why the process took place and why the project happened to begin with. I think the majority of the concern was that, um, they didn't want their kids to go to a different school. And the school board has agreed to allow those children to stay in Pennsylvania County schools. They, they did attend the meeting, and they did notify them of that. The only question I think going forward is whether or not those ten households are going to be required to continue to pay the solid wage fee, because those are actually being taxed in Pennsylvania County, but the US census map shows them outside. So you all have a clear copy of this. It lists all the addresses and, um, highlights each house. Um, the closest house to the county boundary is a hundred and ten feet out of Pennsylvania County. Um, so, uh, so out of the, these households, only ten of them are paying Pennsylvania County taxes, but all of them are clearly outside of the boundary. We did not know that they were registered in Pennsylvania County, because it happened before my time. But with the new technology, it was determined with the research that that's why these corrections needed to be made. So in two thousand and thirteen, the final, final product was thirty-four voters were transferred, twenty-two voted in Halifax, out of the thirty-one. Zero of them voted in Pennsylvania County. Uh, we didn't have any known issues on election day. And I've also included in your, in your packet that, that proof that Mr. Brandon's household all voted in Halifax County. None of them voted in Halifax County. Um, we did move the one voter to Franklin, and we moved the two voters to Henry, and they voted. And again, there was no known issues in any of our voting locations with this. Okay? Um, we, I've also included in your packet a letter from the clerk of the court in regards to the county boundary line. Um, she does reference that there really has not been an update to the boundary, um, and that in order to, to make that change, it would require a court order or a legislative act. The second thing in your packet is the Henning statute, which is the only written description of the county boundary, and that's from seventeen hundreds. Um, it essentially says that it starts at a line on Straight Line Creek and goes in a, sort of a direction to County Line Creek, and that's it. Um, there is no other written description. Um, I've also included in your packet a spreadsheet that lists all the addresses and the names of the citizens that were affected and those that you have discrepancies with the taxes. Um, the ones that are in red are the ones that are continuing to pay Pennsylvania County taxes. So that's in your packet, and that's how you know those are the ones that were affected in that manner. So moving forward, essentially, what we were doing is, is correcting a problem that we were unaware of until now. Um, but moving forward, essentially, you have four different belief systems and nine-one-one, taxes, school, and voting. And they all have their own requirements as far as longos and what they have to, to use. Um, and unfortunately, in order for anything to be changed going forward, it would be an act of the General Assembly to, to move votes. Um, and that's, that's really where we are. I do regret that some of you may have had a negative feeling towards the project and how it was handled. And I hope that this brings you a better understanding of the project and the reason why we had to make those changes.
Questions from board?
Just one. Yes, sir. I want to make sure I, I understand this, because I read this is, this is kind of a history lesson.
Yeah.
Because, because I understand this, what happened was, those farms, or tracts of land that were on the boundary, it was decided years ago by the powers to be, that, that farm or tract of land was sixty percent in Pennsylvania County and forty percent in Halifax, or wherever the boundary was. Then the entire, um, farm would be, or tract of land would be taxed in Pennsylvania, and vice versa.
Yeah.
And as land was subdivided or sold into tracts, nobody did the appropriate research or didn't question it. So if I cut off two acres of my farm to my daughter, and that happened to be the forty percent part that was in Halifax, and when they did the research for the voting, and said that our household and lot sets in Halifax County, this is what got us where we are today.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's pretty easy to understand how it happened.
Yeah.
Um, and I can, but I can also understand if I had been told I lived in Pennsylvania County my entire life, or Halifax, and then you said, I might though now with the, with the side of waist, they'd be glad that you put me over there. You don't let me, my kids stay in Pennsylvania County schools. My father, that school was in the state.
Yeah. And Mr., uh, Mr. Julian Richardson, uh, did attend the meeting, and him and I spoke. Because, uh, when he spoke to y'all at your last meeting, he, he was under the impression that he wasn't Pennsylvania County resident, but he's actually been paying Halifax County, and his kids have been paying, been attending Pennsylvania County schools. So again, knowledge is power. When you don't know, you don't know.
So he's been paying Halifax County taxes?
Since, since that house has been built.
In the schools did recently vote not disrupt the educational experience of these families, and so the status quo is going to be the same.
The same, yeah.
And that was, that was primarily the, um...
The main concern.
And that does have our ADM today.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir.
I just want to clear one thing. We've already answered the question, but I want to be real clear, because we've got some media here.
Yes.
Uh, no one from the same house voted in Pennsylvania County, and other members voted in Halifax County. That did not happen.
That did, absolutely did not happen.
And nobody was disenfranchised or prevented from voting on the?
Absolutely not. Yes, sir.
One question.
Yes, sir. Back to me.
I want to make absolutely sure about the schools. The children are going to be in Pennsylvania County this year, but now what about next year and the year's end?
As far as I know, they will continue to stay in Pennsylvania Counties throughout graduation.
All right. I got to ask that question today, to be sure of them.
Yeah.
The second thing I will say, uh, just as a, more of a collaborative effort. If we ever have something like this come up again, maybe if the board could have been informed earlier, we could have got out front and helped push this message to everyone, and it wouldn't have been as much.
Sure.
You know, call back. Or, or we could have put it on the county website. We, we could have done some more media help. So if you had that again, I'd, I'd say come, you know, come in more early.
Absolutely.
Any, any other questions?
Just to comment.
Yes, sir. It's my.
This is a prime example of, at the last board meeting, this actually sounded terrible.
Mm-hmm.
And, but this is an example for the board to understand that it's, it's two sides to every story, and we need to get all the facts in place before we as a board start making comments. And that, and I'm talking about it myself included, uh, because this was a complicated situation. And I understand how citizens were extremely upset, as I would have been if I was told this.
And I mean, I want to point this out. This took me alone almost three months. Nobody helped me on this. I don't have to thank for that. So I had to go through all three hundred and eleven addresses, and nobody else has the authority in my office to change those households. So it was just me at that.
And Ms. Sanders was down there. She had part-time help. Do you not have part-time help?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Warren, pardon me.
Mr. Davis.
I agree with you. The only thing was on this, I really wish we, you know, and I've already told Kelly, she did a good job on her presentation, is just that I just wish that, uh, I would have been far more informed being in my district. So that way, uh, we could have had, as Mr. Warren said, a far better corrupt, you know, collaborative, uh, operation. So that way, everybody was on the same page, because I didn't get the same page till the day of the meeting. And I'm thinking, what is, what is going on here? Then the confusion with, uh, Dr. Miller, thinking that somewhere in his, his, uh, district as well. So, uh, but I can, I can assure you one thing. Those people, in my opinion, uh, deserve some, some answers from the state level, and, uh, I'm going to look into that. I'm already discussing it with this, with, uh, legal counsel now. So, uh, I think every one of them deserves some, you know, you know, some kind of a statement or some kind of reason of what happened to kind of better them. And make them whole. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, we're down to six A. Uh, new employee introduction, Mr. Sines.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Chairman and board members, um, I'm happy to be introducing another new employee, uh, a new member to the family, so to speak, really. Um, as you well know, uh, we've got a great animal shelter, a pet center now that we work closely with, uh, Lynchburg Humane Society, get established. We'll be going out on our own effective January first, so it was critical that we have somebody that has knowledge and experience to run our shelter. So I'm happy tonight to introduce the, our selection, James McLaughlin, is, uh, is the new executive director of the Pennsylvania County Pet Center. And I'll let James just tell a little bit about his background, but we've really thrown a lot in. He's only been with us now, this is the second week. He started last week. And, uh, and he's really impressed us with how he's kind of confronted problems and he's very ready to transition now.
Thank you very much, Greg. And, uh, nice to meet everyone. A little bit of background. I'm retired Navy, um, was always involved in rescue and things of longos nature. Um, once I retired, I found my calling in animal welfare, and I've spent the last six years at the Sportsman Humane Society, worked my way up from the bottom to the top. Um, we've accomplished a lot of great things during my tenure there, including the first no-kill, uh, city shelter in Hampton Roads as of this year. And I'm very excited to be here working at the pet center and look forward to what we can accomplish here.
Any things from the board? Uh, we welcome you here, and I'll go ahead and give you out front of this. The year for Mason to be the frontrunner in the picture of the pet center is nearing up. So don't, don't hesitate to reach out to Mr. Black, Blackstock, see if you can get him those checks. Thank you very much.
More supervisors than get an increase.
Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you very much.
We're down to six B. Next Generation Nine-One-One. Uh, Mr. Slime.
Good evening. I just want to very quickly review on just a little bit of the Next Gen Nine-One-One. You see some stuff in your packet first of nine regarding some grant, um, approval. Uh, Next Gen Nine-One is, uh, been talked about in the state for about, almost a decade anymore. And what it really deals with is the things you don't see when you're on Nine-One-One, but it's how a call gets routed to us, how we capture that information, and how we can transfer that data to another call center, it may be such as, you know, the situation on Smithman Lake. Somebody called me and hit our tower and came to our center, but it was maybe in Franklin County or Dr. County. We would transfer that with more efficiency and be able to transfer more data to their, to their centers. As well as allowing the tax denial. The upgrade for us actually really won't occur until the second half of two thousand and twenty. But the reason I'm bringing this before you now is, um, it does come with a cost of about fifty-eight thousand dollars for the upgrade. And then after we upgrade and implement it, it has a cost of just under twelve hundred dollars a month additional cost to us. Good news is, there's grant money out there now that we can secure from the state to pay for the upgrade and also cover twenty-four months of that additional cost after the upgrade. So, uh, what we've put in the board packet is, uh, basically go ahead and be able to start down the road and get, get the processing going and securing those grant funds, making sure we have those when it comes time for us to start, uh, start our implementation. We'll have a little bit of prep work. Most of that prep work is going to be in our GIS department. Daniel and Terry Witt have already been going and attending some of the meetings on what has to happen as well. Uh, good news is, we were fairly already meeting the requirements for it. We're not far off from arguing some of those meetings. Terry might do a little work, uh, probably, uh, next, post the next, uh, fourteen, fourteen months or so, but he'll give us ready for this, but, you know, for the most part, shouldn't be a shame when it comes out. Uh, just wanted to give you a little brief overview of what that is. It's something you will never see through nine-one-one more. It's more a behind-the-scenes kind of technology type stuff. Uh, so, uh, you'll see that fly, and you can consider taking the house, go ahead and be forward to some grant funds for that.
Questions?
Comments? Doing a good job.
Thank you, sir.
You said we got three from the, sit with the, uh, I won't say part of it, but the good gospel singing music we heard.
I think they got three.
We got three candidates?
Two or three applications they were, we've done, yes, sir.
We were looking for ten.
I'd like to have thirty.
Weather didn't cooperate too good.
No, sir. It sure did. But as a start, and, uh, our folks appreciated the invite to get out.
Maybe we, yes, sir, maybe we need to have some more of them, so that maybe we could entertain.
We actually, uh, for that, we got some brochures printed up, things we've never had for volunteers. I'm working on some other things that improve our website even more, and, uh, we want to fix some, uh, advertising kind of boards when they go out in the event.
I want to thank Dr. Miller and you for, for being on the same page of being creative about that. I think that was a good, I think we hit a home run. I'd just like to see a few more.
I think just being seen out there, letting people know what's going on, I think that's a huge, huge win for us too. So, you know, it's like anything else, you got to market yourself.
Good job. That's true.
Everybody else. So, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're, we're down to six C. Discussion of new removal of dangerous structures. Mr. Sines.
At our last meeting, we, we had a discussion about dangers of the lack of these structures. And as part of that discussion, we indicated that we had one project we were just about ready at that time to bring to you for consideration. And that project is, uh, three six six, um, Route twenty-nine. It is just a little ways north of Fall Creek on Business twenty-nine. Um, what you have on the screen now and in your packet is the assessment card information on the property. And I'll just call your attention to, uh, the number on here that the, uh, total market value at this point is assessed at twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. So there is some value in this property. We talked about the process of if the county has to act, that it will be placed a lien on the property. So I want to make sure you're aware of that information. Uh, the next page after that is, one more, Kevin. That does clearly indicate the condition of the property right now. So there is no question about it being a structure that, uh, that is not repairable or salvageable. The next item in your packet is a letter from our code, uh, person, or our code person contacted the property owner, and she had responded back. It's in the state now, as these things often are, the willing pardon the state. And they just come back and said that they've given the county permission to tear down the hazardous structure and remove the debris. Uh, they did ask to be notified what that cost would be, since it would be a lien on the property, and we have been in communication with, uh, with Ms. Newman. The, the next page in your packet is the estimate that we have from the contractor. Uh, and, and Ms. Hayes did check with a number of contractors, so we met our obligations that way. But we've got twenty-five hundred dollars to tear down the house and load into dumpsters with the understanding, and I've discussed this with Mr. Hicks. Uh, this bid is based on the county furnishing devices for the debris and... the county furnishing the boxes for the debris and hauling the debris off to the landfill, and of course waiving the landfill costs. So there will be a county value that, that Richard will come up with that'll be added in to the cost to the contractor, so that'll be all included in the amount of the lien. So I guess what we're looking at right now is, here's one that we're ready for you to consider, but in staff discussions, we feel obligated to disclose that this is, you know, one structure. There are literally hundreds of these in Pennsylvania County. Now, this is a highly visible one. But it's not unheard of, but it's starting down the road, and we just need to keep our eyes open that we're not gonna be able to afford to do every single structure, so it would have to be on a case-by-case basis. And the other thing that, that we need to disclose is, there is no funding source for this type of project. Now, we're not talking, again, huge numbers, and we hope to recoup that cost in the future. But if you go to Ms. Vanderhad and say, well, what is the source of this funding? There is no land item for demolition builders. I'm sure that she can come up with that, if the board so determines. But we just want to put this before you, again, this, this particular one is fairly modest, and we think everything is lined up, and we just welcome the board to discuss whether they want to move on this or not.
Board's questions?
Comments? Comment? I have had some complaints, as Mr. Hunt knows, from my district, past, on the structures of this nature. And my concern is, I think the board needs to come up with a consistent way to deal with these, because it shouldn't involve politics and who can get full votes, or make pressures on them to get rid of one of these houses, or mobile homes, or structures. It's obvious, looking in this packet, that this house right here, this house, this particular structure, needs to be bulldozed and whatever. The property value, I looked at it, I think it's four acres, that's, that's probably the value of the property is in the acreage itself. But before we start approving these things, I think we need to come up with a way that we're going to sift through those, because it's literally hundreds, if not over a thousand of these structures in the county, in neighborhoods. Now, I don't know how we do it, I mean, I think it's gonna take some thought, but I would think your priorities would be in residential districts, R1. We, we cannot be the only county in the United States, or the Commonwealth of Virginia, for that now, that's dealt with this issue before. So there ought to be some policies out there that we could pull in a few of them and take a look at. But this, you could be opening a Pandora's box if we're not careful with this. And, and I understand that when we place a lien on a property, that sooner or later, and it could be years, we could get our money back. But that's not a, that's not a fun, you can't plan on funding this by the liens. You can't budget when those liens will be collected, because sometimes these liens go decades without being collected. The property, and this particular matter, it's an estate. I can tell you in my own family, we have an estate that, what's called, was set up in the fifties, and we still haven't sold the properties. It's two-hundred-and-so much acres of it. It's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm telling you from my own personal experience, so I know about these things. So I, I, you know, I just caution the board, I know this was in my district, and I know I took a lot of heat for the structures, and Baden did, Baden and the board did help me with that some, but we got some cleanup. But if you, we need to be careful as to how we deal with this. And I think we need to come up with a policy as to how we want to do that. Because it's unfair for the board to put the staff in a position where it's obvious to all of us looking at this house, and we need to be getting rid of it. But I can ride down Twenty-Nine and take a right or a left, and the standard of the district can show you ten that look as bad or worse.
That's often the case when, you know, right now, we're on a complaint basis, supervisor calls, community development, they go out and look. It's like witch house, because there's, you might pass five on the way out there that look just as bad. I mean, we can develop, we can suggest to you some type of matrix where we consider zoning, where we, we consider whether it's on primary highways, for visibility, things like that. And of course, we have talked about potentially having a land item in the future budget that we haven't done before, but, you know, where we can have somebody set aside for demolition. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even go as far as to suggesting a matrix, first of all, with some zoning, like our one, because it's sitting there on that agricultural, you know, old farmhouse, or something, big farms. But you may even want to look at, and I'm sure it's an existing policy somewhat, but we've got some in districts. As you say, if we're gonna set aside in a budget twenty-five thousand dollars to do this annually, then it rotates by district, where each district gets, just gets to reach it a hump, to be consistent. Because we all have these structures in that district.
Thank you, you too. The only thing I will say is, I do agree, especially with the R1 sections, that we need to have something. I do agree with reaching out to other areas and seeing if you can come up with a true matrix that works for everyone. The thing I will say is, just for clarity, I know what you meant, meant with what you said, but again, we got media here, so, we're not waiving the fee at the landfill. The fee is being charged against the property. We're just not requiring the demolition agent to pay that fee.
That's correct. We do, we don't need to keep the cost down.
Exactly.
It's not part of the contractor's fee, or it is in the, in the account.
It's not being waived, it's being charged. Just second mistake, can you finish my thought, and I'll get to you. The second part of that is, Baden, is it permissible for whatever the solid waste fee is for the debris, plus the fee we pay the contractor, let's say it ends up being three thousand dollars? Does the treasurer apply an interest factor to that every year as it remains unpaid?
With lien?
Yes.
I, I don't know the answer to that. Usually, I would imagine the answer is nothing. But we get a form lien, and then we put it to record, and it's a long game to get paid when the property sells, but I, I'll, I'll look into that.
I would be interested to bring that back, and if it's not a fee being charged on these interest fees for tying our funds up, it should be, so please check.
We could certainly make a code where we put an administrative fee in there, so.
Well, no, we want, we want an amortized fee every year that our money's tied on. I mean, that's only fair to the sense.
When a bank puts a lien on, on something like that, the interest.
Let me, let me ask one, one last question, I'll come back down to Mr. Davis and then Mr. Warren. The one thing I will comment about this, Mr. Sides, and I appreciate you really devin' into this more, is it is my belief, and I don't have any facts to back this up, but it would be my belief, that if we could systematically, in particular in the R1 districts, clean up these type situations, that if, we will see an increase in property values from a sales standpoint and all of that, that could be an offset for some of the expenses we would be incurred. Possibly. Because, I mean, it's just like the one you got cleaned out here recently with the barn out here on Twenty-Nine. That was such an eye sore, wanting to deal with springs that look so much nicer now, and thank Blair's fire department for taking that one down. So, I mean, just, it makes a big difference in the whole area. Mr. Davis?
I just have one question, and that is, I agree with your statement on the property value increase, especially in the residential area, but at the end of the day, is this, let's say that in this particular case, or even one that's in more of a dire strait situation where we, we have to take, if we had to assume the property, so to speak. The question is, is if we don't have anything, say, as Mr. Blackstock said, a matrix put in place yet, or whatever, what happens with the safety factor in the residential area? If someone gets over there and gets harmed, who's gonna pick up that particular tab? If, say, the individual's dead, and we've had to assume, or whatever the reasons are? I'm just looking at, from a safety standpoint, would the county be held liable, say, an outside entity that took up the case from New York City for an individual, whatever, a child gets hurt, or whatever? I'm just saying, is there a possibility from the legal counsel that the county could be held liable for that? That's all I'm asking.
What, if, if we don't remove properties, or properties, when we usually remove a property, we're gonna take it down to almost better?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, but I'm saying, in the process of time, and the individuals are, whatever the reasons are, the, the structure's still there, it's dilapidated, it's condemned or whatever, at the end of the day, in a dire situation, say, oh, the people were dead, you know, and we had to take that property, or whatever, we had to assume it. If somebody, if the thing fell and we didn't do anything, or hadn't done anything, would we be held liable for, say, a fatality or something?
Or if it was reported to us as a hazardous situation?
That's what I'm, that's right, there you go.
Well, I mean, we have sovereign immunity, and so unless they can prove a factual scenario where we're grossly negligent, we're not gonna be liable. But I will say that typically, we don't take property, but we.
That is true.
We, we, they have to be deliquing in taxes for at least three years before we can motion and everything. But in that reporting period, we sent somebody out and had it boarded up, or we get on, I don't think we'd have a lot of.
Okay, that's all I was, just making sure we're not held liable. But that's a good question, because you don't know if you broke the law until you've got a new trespassing sign up there.
Actually, if you put a lien, then we can't do that anyway.
No, we can't.
Mr. Farmer?
Mr. Chairman, I'm on the legislative committee, and I recall a few weeks ago, we met for a couple hours, it seemed like, and this was a topic we discussed for, at length. I haven't heard any comments tonight regarding next steps towards that, or this, I mean, this was a particular item that was, was a topic. So I, I'd like to know, Mr. Blackstock kind of hinted at, there's no matrix, there's no written rules, so to speak. And I thought that was kind of the direction we were leading down with the legislative committee, and I knew we can't, we can't take action, and I think part of our did end that night was, well, let's maybe take it to the full board, and I didn't, you know, I just didn't see any comments towards that, because that was a.
Well, the, the next item on your agenda is a legislative committee, we're gonna review what we did, so.
Well, this particular.
Dilapidated structures were not on that agenda, we did have a potential grass and weeds ordinance on there that's kind of similar, but actually dilapidated property was not on there.
I would, I. I'm sorry. I, in, in regards to Mr. Farmer's concerns and the board's concerns, I would, I would suggest what we do is, tonight, under the area, on the, on the agenda of action taken work session, that we offer a motion to direct staff to develop a matrix on dilapidated structures and bring it back to the board, and we also direct staff in executive committees at work now to create a land item with the funding, with funding for the upcoming year, so we go on and get moving with this, because this is a hot, this is something that, it's obvious, I don't know whose house, but I do know whose, who's, we all, we all have this now, this house just happens to, people want on screen, everybody has it, but I would, what I would think we do tonight is make a motion to direct staff to come up with a matrix or a policy, bring it back to the board or the legislative committee, and, you know, get ready to start budgeting, is to create a land item for budgeting to take care of this. In this case, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, but I'll tell you, some of those structures, it could get, it could get pricey. You know, you sat here tonight and said, is this twenty-five hundred dollars? We can do twenty-five thousand, we can do ten. Well, this one may be twenty-five hundred, but the next one may be eight or ten thousand. It depends on as, dustis removal and all kinds of stuff.
Historical, right?
Mr. Farmer?
Turn down historical, that costs.
Hundred thousand.
Great, I got a question. The second one, to me, we just want to read that, read it, read it, it's almost like she wants us to demolish the house, instead of her hiring someone. It's unusual weather, really, most times they're fighting, don't turn a hazard. I think she's actually encouraged us to do it, to get it toward her, why don't she just get it demolished herself? I mean, I mean, is anybody saying that, whatever, like I said?
Yeah. You got someone in that estate that says, I'm not turning up or down, that's exactly what that is.
Maybe that's part of the agency, but that's unusual.
Lots of land bill fees.
The standard process has been followed for years, is you notify them that it's a dangerous structure, and the date it takes. And then there's always the threat by code of the county doing to take a lien. She's looked into the cost a little bit, the costs were higher than what she thought was reasonable, so she said, okay, tear it down and place a lien against it.
Okay. She's saying that I give you the authority. That's, that's the part. You know, people that are here, and they may not own it.
Well, we would need to do a legal process.
Yeah, we would have.
She's the executor.
She's the executor, we, the executor's been notified, you know, it's her fiduciary responsibility to, she authorizes something that's not permitted, it's not under the rest of, it's not on the county. Right, Baden?
Correct.
Just like the unusual league.
Yeah, I'd be happy to hold a motion.
Mr. Scars?
That's kind of my question as well, I was gonna piggyback on what Ms. Farmer said, what are the, who's been dealing with Ms. Newman, and what do you think, once she provides a deal, and she thinks it's satisfactory for her, do you think she'll pay it or not?
No, we've already passed the point, when Ms. Hayes and Community Development's been in contact with her, and when they, she came back and said, we've got a contract to do it for twenty-five hundred, she said, okay.
So that part in her letter where she says, contact her before we tear it down, try to get things available, that was just blundered.
Well, was it at that particular time?
That's a very interesting question, though, Mr. Scars. Baden?
Yes.
Would we have the ability to bill her before we put a lien on the property for the full removal, including the waste fees? Because if she's executor of the estate, and there's other assets in the estate, including cash or something, she could pay just write the check.
Right, yeah, I think, I think we should, I think we should bill it before this.
Just say, if you don't pay in sixty days, we'll place an injunction.
Yeah.
But in the end, most of these estates, it's like this, probably a bunch of people tied up in it, and there's no money.
Well.
I'd be surprised, somebody's paying taxes on it, somebody's paying taxes on it, the treasurer would be.
Which means there's gotta be possibly some funds in there, but.
Possible, or she may be reaching a pocket paying taxes.
Mr. Davis, did you have something?
Yes, sir, I was just wondering, maybe if it wasn't as bestest and it was ascertained that it was just an all-wood subject, I think there could be a possibility of a fire department doing a control burn there.
Mr. Slim can ask that question.
Mr. Slim left, we'll ask him that off record.
I think that possibly that'd be a far better solution.
Well, we had, we just had a barn removed, and Mr. Sides confirmed this, they didn't want to burn.
The days of burning structures.
Don't let fire.
Okay. Are pretty much over because of environmental concerns.
Oh, okay, oh, that's right, okay, I doggone caught in footprint, thank you, and that's a bunch of bull.
But anyway, thank you.
Anything else with Mr. Sides on this? If not, we're gonna move along. We're down to six D, I think, if you can see a lit now, it's Mr. Hunt.
Sure. I just wanted to, to inform the board, I, I know some of y'all were there, but some were not, about what occurred at the next legislative, at the last legislative committee meeting, and we have two action items from the legislative committee that are gonna be on tonight's meeting as public hearings, I want to discuss those, I want to bring up some issues with the potential public nuisance animals ordinance that Mr. Farmer and Mr. Scars have raised, and then discuss if the board has any potential revisions to the violence. So we dealt with on Thursday, November twenty-ninth, eight items, and I'll go down the list and explain what's going on.
explain what's going on in this forum, if people can ask me questions, if they have any questions about what's going on. First item we dealt with, and this is going to be a public hearing tonight, is the legislative committee unanimously voted to have a public hearing to potentially revise Pennsylvania County Code Section 6-6 to raise the indigent and elderly partial tax real estate exemption threshold from eighteen thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars, and raise the total annual cap on this exemption from three hundred dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars. These numbers weren't just grabbed out of thin air, Ms. Hammack was here, she used poverty numbers, census data, and she came up with this threshold, which is in line with what a lot of people in the state are doing. So, by raising from eighteen thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars, you're going to open this exemption up to more people in need in the county, and you're going to raise the total cap from three hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars. There's a public hearing tonight about that, legislative committee unanimously recommended that. Does anybody who was not there have any questions about that or not understanding, because it is going to be an action item on tonight's meeting? If not, I don't feel we're getting hungry, we can move on to the next topic. The next topic we had was, and this was brought by concern by Mr. Farmer's constituent, is we discussed potentially revising the county code to allow for late filing of a land use application with a penalty. State code allows it. What we determined was, we don't want to muck up what's going on this year, just for one citizen, and that we're going to bring this back to legislative committee and the board in two thousand and nineteen at the appropriate time, so that the timing allowing for the late land use application filing is more in line with what Mr. Short, and Ms. Hammack have about sending out tax bills.
Hey, can we also talk about going from three years to, I mean, one year to three year renew on that same conversation?
Well...
When we get to that point?
Yeah, you can, you're welcome to amend the agenda, or we can, we have matters from the board tonight, and we also have...
Not even when we get to the point later down the road.
Yeah, sure, yeah, we can, it'd actually be better to do it, because it's the same section, and it would save us advertising fees.
Well, I want to make one other point about that, if anybody wasn't at that meeting. It wasn't only because we didn't want to do one citizen, it was because they had gotten about thirty to thirty-five phone calls, is that right, Mr. Farmer?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four phone calls, and they didn't make a record of those phone calls about people wanting...
That had been denied.
That had been denied. So we couldn't, we couldn't recall every one of them, so it wouldn't have been fair to be consistent to all citizens was why we turned back to react.
Because if passed tonight, you have, I think, until December thirty-first, it just didn't...
It was timing, didn't it?
Yeah, it just was, it was a very narrow window.
But I did remember that correctly, right?
Yep, you do. All right, the next thing, which we talked about was, we're going to ask the board supervisor at the real organizational meeting on the fourth, or third, third of January, every year we ask you to adopt the board supervisor bylaws. This is a time for any board member to discuss whether you want to change anything about our bylaws, because there is a, there is a ten-day notice period that we need to satisfy. Some potential thoughts, we don't really have any ownership of this, these are your internal rules of governance, this is for the board, not anybody else, to mess with. One thing was, do you think the four-thirty time period for this work session, is that working, or do you think we need to move to four? That's something we considered, we also considered, did you want to add a phrase in your bylaws that gave the board member who appointed somebody to a committee the authority to remove somebody for calls? That's what we talked about. Right now, you do have the ability to do that, I just would like to be able to point to something, I could take or leave it, but it might be a good addition to your bylaws. Or anything else you don't think is working in the bylaws, you need to let me know, because you have the ability to amend these, but you can't do it at the same meeting, you bring it up, because that's not fair. If you were to reach out to me and say, Vaden, I really want to amend this, I could put everybody on notice that on the real organizational meeting, we could discuss potentially revising our bylaws. You can't do it on January third unless you satisfy that notice requirement. So this is your chance to talk about what's working, what's not working, or if it's all working, you can just keep it at a status quo, but just remember, that's a living, breathing document, and it's the board's internal governance procedures, and you can modify those as you deem fit, assuming it's legal. Anybody got any thoughts on this matter? Mr. Blackstock?
The, when we appoint somebody to a committee, we basically nominate them, but the entire board, except for, the entire, the entire board votes on them, so it's a board action.
Unless it's one of the chairman...
Right, and that's a different category.
Sure.
But we're talking about somebody that we nominate, and right now, because I asked early in the year, I could nominate somebody for any district if I wanted.
Legally, yes, you could.
But if we decided that we wanted to remove somebody that was appointed to a board, the entire board would have to vote on it.
That's correct.
The individual board member couldn't say, I'm upset with Joe, or Susie, so I want them all. It would have to be brought back to the board and the entire board vote on it.
That's correct.
You'd have to give the full vote, so.
Right.
Mr. Scars, you have something?
I was just going to say, removing for calls, I've got a lot of experience in that, so I feel maybe you should have the written policy of Vaden.
Anybody else?
Staff, once again, suggested a four o'clock start time to work sessions, so four thirty, so we'll consider that.
Board?
Mostly for economic development.
Thirty minutes to me, don't matter.
I like four thirty.
Yes, during the legislative committee, I mean, people pointed to me because of my day job, and I did not want to be the lone ranger making that decision, so I just said, let's make all seven people aware of it and discuss it.
Well, here's the thing, I'm okay either way, but if we do, if we do four thirty, and we don't get finished, we do what we've been doing, which is, don't close out the closed session, finishes that night. So, I mean, the people that are working people, if that works better, I'm fine with going with that. I mean, I'm going to make my schedule work regardless of what time you pick, so. I don't see any, I don't see any big heartburn about four thirty.
All right, so do you want me to just put some very benign language about removal, and y'all, and we can throw it against the wall and see if it sticks on January third? Is that okay?
Send it out to the board, so we can review it and comment.
All right. The next item we talked about was our legislative priority list. This is the same thing you've seen about three or four times, nothing's changed. If you desire to adopt this list that we'll send to our legislators, because we've got to get something to them, because you know the next session starts right away, it's on page one thirty-two in your packet, it's also on the consent agenda tonight. When you adopt the consent agenda, you will adopt that as your legislative priority list, and we will send that out to our legislators to please assist us with our priorities this year. All right, the next item, that is an action item tonight, is revision to our noise ordinance. Ryan Haskins approached me and said that he recently had a case which I believe it might have been in your neighborhood, Joe Davis, or your...
Of course.
Yes, where some, somebody got a little carried away with Tannerite. And if you don't know what Tannerite is, it's a, it's an explosive, you mix it together, and then a high projectile that shoots it, it goes boom. And if you use it correctly, it's fun, and it's recreational, but if you use it incorrectly, this person was packing cars and refrigerators with it, and it was shaking, the neighbor's house so bad that pictures were falling off the walls of their houses and breaking. So he attempted to cite this person for violation of our noise ordinance, he found that there was a dead code section in our ordinance, because it hadn't been reviewed in a long time, and that all we're doing tonight is fixing that code section that references to a pressure standards that he needs to prosecute them. He was successful prosecuting this person under a public nuisance law, so he was more than one way to skin a cat, but all that thing is today is, we're going to change the dead code section in there that's incorrectly listed, that's forty-sixty to forty-one-six, which will give Mr. Haskins all the tools he needs in his toolbox to prosecute knuckleheads that don't buy by our noise. That's what we're doing. All right, now, this is, the next thing we talked about was a potential nuisance animal ordinance. This was brought up because Mr. Scars had a, I guess it's probably Mr. Farmer's constituent, but Mr. Scars has been involved in it, there was an individual who had dogs that were running at large that were terrorizing her dogs, but yet it had not risen to the level of the dangerous dog complaint, because nobody had been bitten or attacked.
Dogs in the neighborhood had been attacked.
Right, but not per... So, a lot of localities, and I've included in the several statutes, the legislative committee took no action on this, they seem to like the Bedford, where if you fit in this category of a nuisance animals, this is another tool in the toolbox for the animal patrol to cite somebody without having to have an attack or a bite. Somebody from the ag community was here at the last meeting. If the board intends to do this, and we said we'd bring this back in two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Farmer wants it sooner rather than later to satisfy his constituent, which I agree with, it would not apply to livestock, it would just apply to domestic animals. So you're talking dogs, cats, I guess there's some other domestic animals, but it would not apply to livestock. So, the person from Virginia Farm Bureau was here, didn't believe that the ag community would take umbrage with this, or have a problem with this, if it did not apply to livestock. If the board is okay, we might need another legislative committee meeting, I believe the best fit for Pittsivani County would be slightly tweaking Bedford County's ordinance that I share with the legislative committee. And remember, we're not a leashed law county, we're a rural county, we've got to remember our agricultural roots. But we do have the ability to have a no dogs running large place, but that requires over fifty percent of the neighbors signing up. So in a situation that we're in, she can't get fifty percent of the neighbors to sign this no dogs running large, so this is just, if you have a habitual dog or cat that's digging under your fence, or terrorizing your dogs, or scaring you because it's on the porch when you try to come home, or defecating on your cars, this would be just another tool to allow us to simply find and make somebody affect twice by letting their animal run at large. So, Mr. Farmer, you want to expound on this at all, but I foresee this coming back for the board sooner rather than later in two thousand and nineteen?
No, I think you did a good job.
Okay. All right, the next thing that we talked about in the board, the legislative committee said, bring this back in two thousand and nineteen, was, and I do believe this might be controversial, but was the discussion of potential grass and weeds ordinance. The thought was only apply to residential districts and not ag districts or other districts in the county. This kind of goes hand in hand with the dilapidated structures. We've seen a need from staff and some board members that in R1, you should be, have protections, you know, more so than agriculture community about appearance that could impact negatively your property values and resale values. They took no, the legislative committee took no action on this, I think that before we even contemplated doing this, we'd have to have a lot more discussion about this. So we're supposed to bring that back in two thousand and nineteen, nothing's settled, I don't know if this will ever pass, but that's just a topic that maybe we'll discuss in two thousand and nineteen.
Well, let's do what I think Mr. Blackstock suggested on another item earlier on, let's reach out to some other communities that are similar to us, and see what they have concerned on, once the legislative committee has as much information as available to them.
Okay, and then the final item was, we discussed potentially revising, and the legislative committee said, don't do anything, bring it back in two thousand and nineteen when it's appropriate time, about tweaking our inoperable motor vehicles ordinance based on your zoning classification. Fewer inoperable motor vehicles are one opposed to A1 and other zoning classifications. No action was taken on that, there's still room for thought on that, and whoever's going to be in the legislative committee next year, I think will be more active than we were this year, but we do have some items to address. So, unless anybody's got any questions, there's only two action items tonight. Noise ordinance, just changing that one code section, and then expanding the elderly and indigent real estate exemption from eighteen K to twenty-five K, and the annual cap from three hundred to four fifty. So I just want to bring this to you, so we can make sauce and discuss it in this format, because tonight, we're going to have two public hearings we've already due to advertise. Anybody got any questions?
Okay, we're down to six, I think it's E, I can't see it. Other reports, does anybody have any? No. Okay. We've already discussed business meeting discussion items, right? You know what, you know what you've got to get ready for over there.
I do.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Any other comments from the board? If not, we're adjourned, we're eating in here tonight.